Welcome to that seven oh two. Myself, Kyle Smith, present. Chris Hopkins, Mr. Clark, Carol, the V R, Lou Musolden.
Jack.
Jack Evans. If I said John, I don't know why I knew it was wrong.
Same thing.
Tell me the other one. Matt Meacham says he'll be late approximately thirty minutes. I believe all the public has signed in, correct? Yep. And let me start with our minutes. Get those out of the way.
I'll move the minutes as presented. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Should we have between forty-six and forty-eight that discussion on the pamphlet? We had mentioned something about discussing with the selectmen or because they technically contacted us originally. And then we said we'd let them know. Should we just put in there? Should we something there that?
Will you be reaching out to them?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Just something in there that they're aware. We'll be working with the selectmen on it. It's not just us.
Yep.
Anything else? All those who favor the minutes as written, the adjustment to forty-six, forty-eight possible?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Attentions? Do you have any correspondence?
Yeah.
Is that the solar panel from Louis?
Uh, no. Uh, the email from.
Oh, Matt. Okay. So Matt Meacham, uh, he'll be out of town for the next Z B A meeting. He says, I believe it would be appropriate for the planning board to appoint someone else to fill that seat for said meeting. Could you put some of that fact in the agenda for me in a minute before? So I guess my first question is, when does the next Z B A meeting?
Uh, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Do we have someone available who could go to that as a planning board rep?
What's the time?
Uh, at least six o'clock.
I'm probably not going to be able to.
I could probably do it if we need it. I should be free.
Okay, thank you.
I'll study over it. Guess I'm doing it. Woo hoo! Alright, so I'll step in. Planning board rep, seventeenth. You can just, uh, email me just to confirm date and time.
Yeah.
Or I have it somewhere. Under this piece of paper I will lose. Need to read correspondence. You know the correspondence we have is related to solar panels. So I think, where did we leave off with September fourth? Uh, from the last meeting to this one, we left off, there's a letter from Conservation Commission. Was that forwarded to Zach?
Do you know? I don't know.
Did you?
I do not.
Do you have a copy of that letter?
Which one?
The Conservation Commission. This was not forwarded to Zach.
Oh, I apologize. Hold on, I do have.
Yeah, there are the two letters that we left off.
Yep.
Talking about.
And one was from Mike, correct?
Yep, because that wasn't going to be here.
Yep, and then one was from Conservation Commission. Just seeing our Conservation Commission is leaving this coming Tuesday. I was stopping and over them. Do you have a copy of the, uh, two letters, Henry?
I have, uh, my copy of the Conservation Commission letter and.
Do not know what I do mind.
Um, this is.
Think with this in the papers.
This is, another letter from Michael. Is that the one?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just read it in the record.
Yeah, if you want to read yours.
Uh, I'll. I think this is more around the discussion at the end, my letter, but, um, I'm just reading through the one from.
I can read that one all right, too. To Troy, Troy Planning Board. Conservation Commission would like to make a few requests to the planning board on the Rewild renewable solar projects. These can be part of conditional items approval, so it's not the fourth process step. We'd like a third-party entity to come in and look the three processes over to make sure none of the parcels are currently housing endangered or threatened species. If such, a family conservation committee and rewild would have to meet to ensure the proper plan of either relocation or what is federally required. This third-party would also check impact on current wildlife, and if rewild plans are properly minimizing the impact that will have wildlife to the best of their abilities. Please see attached enclosed list of endangered and threatened species. While not a requirement for rewild to receive approval on the site plan, Conservation Commission would like permission to work with rewild and property owners. The purpose of this would be to hopefully use the buffer zones around the exterior of the fences to create habitat for natural wildlife that are endangered or threatened. This may be bird or bee houses or other items that would be discussed with rewild and property owners. When the project is built, the wildlife will need to be drawn back into the area. Conservation Commission Chairman, House stuff. And there's attached list of. Do you care if we pass it on?
No, no, no.
I just want to know. List is on the back.
Yeah, this is more if we were going to have a discussion around it, so I can, when it's appropriate, I'll be there.
Yeah, we can wait. But you're, you kind of supplied that because you weren't sure if we were going to discuss it all.
Right, if it, if it was coming up for vote, I just wanted this to be on record.
We decided to hold off because I remember this and then.
Correct.
And then Julie did supply his letter. I guess I'll read that sort of to the record. He came in last week, but he did not have a letter. Planning Board Board Selectmen, as deputy health officer, I was asked by Troy Planning Board to review the safety of solar panels and their health impact to the community. Where the Troy Health Department is not able to improve or deny intake process of development, we do exercise the right to give an opinion when asked by town and community members that have concerns. Currently, there is no negative health impact to the community. This decision was based on two primary facts. First, the solar panels are not installed as of this report, with that fact established as no physical material properly the best fit to evaluate the health concerns. Secondly, after reviewing the policy set for the EPA as well as other towns throughout the region that have similar projects, there is no immediate concern. Furthermore, concerns have been brought up by the public, the longevity of the total farms and the potential for leakage and contamination, satisfactory addressed by, within this proposal. In conclusion, the Troy Health Department is confident that there is no immediate health concern to humans or wildlife. With that said, we as a department will continue to monitor the process as well as the upkeep of any solar farms within our jurisdiction. If you or anyone else have further concerns, please reach out to me, Matthew Hooly. And this is contact from. Do you have more on coffee? Go ahead, one more cup, right?
Yeah, I don't have enough.
I started off, people want to do it. So I think that's all the correspondence we had left over from last time, right?
I think there's, there was one more, um, highway, just confirming the road spec that dates way out of the plan. My engineer with road agent discussed the spec and I think there was some formal correspondence.
That was in our package here, correct?
Confirming that. I paraphrased it and summarized it in the supplemental letter that I provided, but there was that correspondence.
Evie, did you have that letter?
It's not a letter. It's an email. It's more, it's my engineer running an email that said, hey, road agent, we're going to do spec X, Y, Z. Road agent affirmatively confirmed yes, then that spec may as well get out of the plan. So just to get that on the record.
Alright. Okay. I believe that's public here, I believe. Carl, you had a question about waivers?
Yeah, I guess, I have, I have a couple issues that I wanted to bring up to the board. And first one being, I guess, as a town, we voted on, on ordinance dealing with, um, as written. At, I forget what town meeting it was, uh, at the polls there, when we voted to, um, to adopt the newest ordinances of which we're following now, and the only specifically with the solar energy systems ones, what I'm concerned with is, we have a set of rules. And we follow a set of rules and we read down through the set of rules. It talks about class six roads, um, and class five roads, and where this can be built is on a class five road, not a class six road. And you read down further, down through this ordinance, and then it talks about waivers and that there can be waivers issued, um, whenever a certain criteria is met. So number one, we have an ordinance that we're not going to be building stuff on a, on a class six road. And then the next thing you know, we have, um, waivers that can be issued for a hardship. Let's deal with that first. A hardship. Well, if you were to read up and define what a hardship is, it isn't necessarily, um, money going into the coffers of a corporation, or money going into the land or, or to lease his land for forty years. It'd be clear cut. That's, that's not, that's not a hardship. It doesn't cut it. And then for, um, the second particular issue talks about, let me just find the exact wording. Hold on one second. Unnecessary hardship was the first one. And then, uh, when the, when the applicant and such waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Well, we have a regulation that we don't build on class six roads. And, and not only that, but there are places in town that this could be done. That's not a class six road. That, that is a class five road. One of those places is being concerned, uh, is being looked at currently, apparently on Door Street. The Big Little Hill one, it's, it's almost like a corporation coming in here and shoving something right down our throat, making us, oh, we want the waiver for this, we want the waiver for that. Well, there is no hardship, and it is contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. It's, it's black and white. It's a class six road. Now we're going to let these people go up there and bastardize land. Secondly, I'll show them there, that this is a, this is a prime area of wildlife. And I'm glad, I'm glad somebody's doing a wildlife study here or asking for one. I've hunted up in that area. I know that area from the top of Bigelow all the way to the sewer plant. I've been up there for approximately fifty years. I know the animals. I know, you know, moose, the deer, the bear, the bobcat, everything. You don't think this is going to have an impact on wildlife? I mean, come on, it's in the ordinance. This is going to be a huge impact on wildlife. It's a major crossing area. Huge. So for those, for those three reasons, I would really like to see this board revisit the waiver issue. First and foremost, this waiver stuff is, it's crazy. That's my opinion. It's crazy. So that's why, that's why I really wanted to be heard, um, so you guys could rethink this. This is not something that's, that's like great for the town of Troy either, in my opinion. Yeah, there's a few tax dollars that are going to come in, it's going to benefit the town of Troy X amount of dollars per taxpayer. What is it, forty dollars, fifty dollars? To have this, you know, this wildlife impact, this precedent-setting class six road thing going on, we have a precedent in this town over the years that I've been here. I think there's thirteen events that have happened on, on warrant articles where there's been votes dealing with class six roads brought to town meeting. Now, if this corporation wants to bring something to town meeting to have the townspeople vote whether they can build this on a class six road, I'm all for it. Put it before the town. But don't let them just go and, and steamroll over our, our ordinance in the spirit of the ordinance by issuing waivers. I really wish you would really look at this again and, and talk about it in private, whatever. But, uh, as a board, this, this is, uh, this is not good.
Can I follow up on that?
Is Carl's done?
Yeah, uh, but, uh, the two points that I'm bringing up, of course, is dealing with the class six road. Spirit of the ordinance, there's no hardship here, and the wildlife issue.
Are you referring to both waivers or one percent? There's two waivers.
There's only one for the Big Little.
Well, I guess, are you only concerned Big Little Hill or are you concerned Door Street too?
The Door Street one, uh, the one that I'm thinking about that bothers me there is when they want to do percentages over here and, because they can't do them over here. We have an ordinance, there are the ordinance again. Well, we'll do it over here because we can't do it over here because of wetlands or whatever. Why have an ordinance? Why don't we just fly by the seat of our pants? This makes no sense. That's my point. Go back to the ordinance. And, and let's stick with the ordinance. Please revisit it.
So you'd like us to look at ballstones, what you're saying?
Yeah.
State your name.
Tim Wolfson, East Seven and Anno Street. Does this board have subdivision approval authority?
We can, we can grant subdivisions of, of lands.
So you have approval authority for subdivisions?
Um, yeah.
Okay, so go back to what Kyle was saying with your waivers. There's RSA six seventy-four, seventy colon forty-one is a state zoning level which supersedes our waivers, and there's set guidelines for this. And if you have a subdivision approval authority, you can grant this being put on a class six road, but not without having the owner with a recorded notice with a registry of deeds acknowledging that the town is not liable for maintenance or any damage that might occur on that road. RSA six seventy-four, seventy colon forty-one I C. And there's another one that's, states basically the same thing. RSA six seventy-four, seventy colon forty-one I D. So if this planning board is going to allow them to put that solar panels out there, we need the owner of that property, which I believe it lives in North Carolina, to record a notice of the registry deeds acknowledging that the town is not liable for maintenance or any damage that might occur on that road. That is, that is a state-level zoning. So our waivers, town of Troy waivers doesn't mean anything. This does. This is state. So in order to approve this, that has to happen first. And on top of that, on top of that, our own, our own ordinances do include impact analysis. There was a recommendation for the wildlife, and all applicants must extend to which the proposed project would impact the standard living or real estate value of the abutters, the rural character of the wildlife impacts on the project area, and the economic health of the town of Troy. These need to be official impact analysis, not just a couple letters written by somebody. Somebody needs to have impact analysis, and we need to know what's going to happen up there on the countryside with the wildlife. There's a lot of acreage up there. So before this can even go on a class six road, what I just read to you, has to happen, registry deeds if this board actually has subdivision approval authority. If it doesn't, this can't go on a class six road. It has to go to a class five road, which we can upgrade to a class five road, but that becomes town's property. Town has to maintain the, the class five roads if we upgrade it from six to five. So there's rules to follow that are not being followed right now.
Just, just to clarify though, this is not a subdivision.
No, no.
What's being, this is not.
But in order, in order for you to be able to allow this on a class six road, this board has to have subdivision approval authority.
I mean, the process for us to make a change is, is through a conditional use permit, which is.
But you can't, you can't do a waiver. You can't, you can't overrule a state, a state zoning. This is state zoning level. RSA six seventy-four, seventy colon forty-one.
Does it?
You can look it up.
Right.
It sounds like.
But I understand as it deals with just subdivision, right?
Well, my, yeah, I might have a different opinion than I would.
What was it? Arison, sorry?
Six seventy-four, seventy colon forty-one.
My, my understanding of the waiver, what the planning board did is we approved a waiver that it didn't have to be on a class five road.
For site plan.
For the site plan approval. It's not our authority to issue the building permit or to have it go forward. That will be with the selectmen. So the selectmen, as I understand it, you guys correct me, will have the choice to either, uh, grant it, like you said, Tim, that they'll have to do that provision and have them, have rewild uh, do that with registry, or I think it's also within the select board's power to, if they wish, as rewild's going to be upgrading the condition of the road to a five, the select board could approve that if they do that step that you're talking about. But we aren't, we aren't as a planning board approving it. It's got to go through the select board.
Right, right. But I mean, we're talking waivers, which.
We approve the waiver, yes. We approve the waiver that allows it to go to the next step.
Well, this RSA right here says, no building permit can be issued, nor can any building be built on any law unless that law has access from one of these five types of streets. And I read two out of five. And one of the, the third one's a class five.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. They, they've got to do that, that D thing, and it would be, it would be if the selectmen decide to approve it as approve the development on a class five road.
Under your, under your definition of, uh, waivers, it, it says that you may, under those two conditions that I talked about.
Yep.
Doesn't say that you have to. Now, if you didn't have to, and this, let's just say you revisited that, and it was, it was, the, the, uh, the waivers were voided. We're going to void the waivers.
Right.
They can go to the, they can go to the zoning board for their waiver as such, but it'd be, it'd be a, what do you call it?
A variance.
A variance. There you go. And that's why we have these checks and balances, in my opinion, is why the hell even issue waivers? No, this is class six road. And there's other places in town to do it, and they're already looking at those, apparently. So stick with the spirit of the ordinances and stay on the roads that you have to do it on. That's, that's the rules. Sorry, if you don't like it, go to the zoning board.
Are we going to discuss that now or go through? I mean, I have to discuss that now, but I don't know if we're going to go through everyone's comments and then circle back. Kyle, what's your preference?
Do you have more comments related to the waivers? I guess with my next question. From the public.
Not to the waivers, no.
Well, we go through the public first, and then we can decide, you know, what we have for a list and stuff to discuss. Because maybe I have something brought up that's shorter.
Makes sense.
So, just.
You want to mention that one?
He's got a list.
Do you have a list? I'll go ahead and go through it.
I want to sum it up. I'll wait. Okay, my first question is, what does the town benefit from this? Who, who gets the benefit of having these solar panels put up there? What's the benefit of having these?
That's, yeah. That's been covered, um, at other meetings.
Ideally, this is something I addressed in my, my, my thing. So the savings on the electrical side of it, and Zach can correct me if I'm wrong, is available to the town regardless if we have a solar field in our town or not. So we don't need one here to take advantage of that.
There's no benefit.
Right. Uh, well, there's a, there's the tax benefit. If you were to you're right, for the pilot payment. It sounds like a great number because it's, it's a it's a total of over a great deal of time. Um, if you were to divide it out by the years and, and by a rough population, everything being equal, and the people in here, you're talking about about a dollar a week per person in town. So less than fifty-two dollars a unit per person benefit, right? So there isn't a huge benefit for the town.
So regardless of the, the class of the road, who's, who's responsible for upkeeping it, keeping it plowed, keeping the drainage ditches, the culverts, so they're not flooding over the roads, who, who's in charge of that? Who's going to be in charge of that?
Rewild, the developer.
They will.
Yep. We've written that in.
That could change though, if the town decides to accept part of the road as a town road again. In which case we would.
Now, is that something that you guys can just approve or the selectmen or the town, the town meeting, correct?
No. If the town maintains it for more than five years, it automatically turns into a class five. Something that happened to Lloyd Lane when Brad Hunter upgraded.
I understand that. I understand that a hundred percent. How was the selectmen when it happened?
The property owner upgraded that road, and we were maintaining it back when he was here.
So who, who makes the call to maintain it? That's what I'm saying. Say, say they, they put the solar panels out there and nobody's plowing it, and all of a sudden, there's a select board saying, hey Johnny, go plow that road.
Well, there's also another person that lives out there, so do you have a contract between all parties that's on that?
But if the town does it for five years, it becomes the town's responsibility. But if somebody says, pump the brakes, we're not plowing that road, it's never going to be the town's, or taxpayer's responsibility.
But there is one person that lives at the end of that road that does maintain that road on her own.
I have another question for Zach. Do you, do you need it to be plowed for anything on your end, or, or would you normally plow that road?
Just for our operations and maintenance or any type of.
Would you open it up after regular?
That's all.
Or just open it up when you need it to be in there?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Um, would you, let's say someone didn't live down the end, would you open that up as needed, or would you, would you plow it regularly?
I think it'd be based on requirements of the town. If you guys wanted it regularly, we have to establish.
I think if, if it's a fire safety issue or something like that, I think.
I haven't heard that from police or fire, so I think we default to plowing when we need to. There is another resident on there, so like the.
She's been maintaining it so far, right?
And there is another benefit for the town. The town gets a highway block grant based on the amount of miles the town has that's under five, that's class five roads. So if that does get turned in, we get highway block grant money for maintenance on that just now. So that is another benefit.
If it, if it what?
If it does get turned into a class five road.
That would have to go before the town for a whole, but that's.
Once I said, five years of maintenance, it automatically can come out of the mountains.
Right, okay, but I mean, we're not.
Do we have a number on what, what that looks like for that short portion of the road?
I do not know at all to tell my head, but I was talking to John Coons when we walked it, and he's a road agent, and he said that it's more money for the highway block grant because when Lloyd Lane turned into a town road, we're getting a little bit more money. because when Lloyd Lane turned into a town road, we're getting a little bit more money. I don't know, we got numbers off the top of my head. But it's based off how many miles the town owns.
Yeah, we're talking a thousand feet there, right? Yeah. So I, I, I wonder if it was a mile out there, would they be allowed to sit for a mile out in the woods? Uh, this is crazy. Personal opinion.
The block grant is about, the block grant's about sixty-five thousand dollars a year based on its total miles.
I think it's nineteen miles somewhere around there.
Something like that. So a thousand feet is going to be a small amount of money.
Yeah.
In all scheme of things.
It's about fifteen hundred dollars per mile currently.
So it'd be about two seventy-five.
Per year. Or, excuse me.
Yeah, per year for the highway block grant.
It'd be about three hundred dollars a year, an additional block grant money.
Well, if this proposal goes through, you can always state that if they want it open to their facility, they, they can maintain it. We don't have to do the thousand feet.
The problem will run, will right, but she'll be, someone else will be maintaining it kind of for them, except for their turnaround.
Or the property, if it's going at the end.
Well, that's what I meant, someone else, I was indicating.
Which currently she's doing it by herself, which is amazing, so.
So, so my thinking on the, the cost benefit, the benefit of the town versus the cost of the town, um, I'm, I'm looking at this like it's a private piece of land, and I, I could be wrong, but when we judge development on a private piece of land, we don't necessarily do the cost benefit to whether the towns, town's gonna make out or not. They meet the ordinance, you know, the cost benefit doesn't come into effect. So I'm assuming with this, it's the same type of thing.
Unfortunately, so to speak, and I say we don't care about the benefit of the town, or this, that, but-
Yeah, I know, I didn't mean to say, care about it.
The site plan, laws, or- Not necessarily what tax benefits it has. So that's kind of the, that's catch twenty-two for us, is we care for the town. But, you know, sometimes we can't, as a planning board, for site plan, it doesn't tell us what's the tax benefit. We know it, we hope that it's good, but we can't use that and determine any of the answers based on the site plan requirements. You know, we can try to do what we can about class five, class six, you know, vegetation growth, wildlife, we can try to do what we can there. Benefits to the town, we can't control. We can't force them to pick another location. If this does get denied, you would have to probably pick another location. But we can't tell them, we don't want you to do this because you don't feel we're getting enough tax money. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. It's not because we don't care, but as far as, planning board has to focus on the site plan. So sometimes it feels like we're not looking at stuff. Well, we have, we have no control over some of that stuff. There's nothing we can-
Our town ordinances has pretty black and white what they need to do.
Yeah. But I'm just pointing out, you asked for, what's the benefit to town?
I'm just curious. I just curious.
Some of that stuff, we can't do.
I mean, as a taxpayer, for a selectman, that's one of the questions people ask. What's in it for me?
Well, I, I get it. I get it. But like I said, this, you know, some of that stuff isn't covered.
It's our private land. Why should there be something in it for you?
Well, I think part, I think part of what the point is, um, is, is the fact that you're issuing waivers to our zoning. So, and normally when a waiver is issued to zoning, it's done in the form of a variance. And when you do a variance, somebody applies for a variance because their project doesn't meet the zoning requirements. One of the criteria for a variance is the public benefit. So it very much is. We've circumvented that, that part of the system here by, by issuing waivers and not going through the, the zoning board, uh, process. So that's one of the criteria if you go for a variance. So it is, it, it can be a factor. Um, but what's happened here, I think, is, and I think probably what the bigger concern is, is, it's, it's, it's been, it's been circumvented, that system.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so, um, my name's Oliver Levick, uh, five four five West Hill Road. Um, I own the Berry Farm at the end of the road, and I, I definitely have a concern with, with our, our view and the implication it could have. Um, probably very much other residents, so apologize for, uh, being a little late here in, in my ignorance. I've been trying to look back over previous meetings. Has there been any, um, surveying done on, on what the implication is, on, on people's views and?
Henry, can you share your email with him on, I said it was the Berry Farm pictures?
Oh yeah, 'cause I, I definitely haven't seen those, so.
Um, there, there has been, I would say, informal, um, discussion, um, at some point.
About your property.
Someone from the public highlighted an area on the photo that was taken from West Hill.
I've seen something like that, but I wasn't sure if it was-
Accurate.
Spin or accurate and-
Late, later, um, I did something a little more scientific and shared it with the board, but it's not, uh, it's, um-
Because I've obviously heard of the acreage and kind of generally where it's gonna be on Bigelow Hill, and, you know, our property, you feel like you can reach, you know, right out and touch it, and, and, and there's a lot of other people on West Hill Road that I think have purchased those properties specifically because of the view. Um, you know, for us, it has a huge impact on, on our business.
Did you put your email on the side of the sheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, if you, I, I've been up to your place and did a bearing on where, where it would be, if you have this, stop by and, and, uh, and try to point out where it's gonna be.
Okay, yeah, that, that, that would be great, 'cause I mean, you know, we, we booked a lot of weddings even two years out now that, I would like to think that they, maybe someone booked a wedding, 'cause my wife can pull off a good event, or because I'm good with a weed whacker, but it's because of the view. I mean, you know, and there's a huge solar farm on Bigelow Hill. You know, even if it's private property, I, it, you know, it's at least a, a valid concern of mine, um, that, that, you know, that's right in the back of our wedding ceremony area and pictures, and, and even picture our Berry, you know, customers and, and stuff like that, that, that wanna come up and, and, and really enjoy that view, and, you know, and we're taxed on that view such as well, so.
That goes back to a full, a bad analysis on everything.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it, you gave that.
Yeah, I'm happy to share it with others, just realize it's not, uh, it's amateur hour, you know, like sort of analysis.
Incredibly well thought out, and it gives you a good, it gives it a-
It does, it does use natural, quite cheap data, gives you a regular location. Probably, I promise you, maybe in the winter you'll see it because all the tree vegetation will be gone. But we used actually one of your pictures with the alternate, as behind the whole row of trees, you'll be able to see it in the summer.
Okay.
But I'd say in winter, I could, you probably see it.
That's what I'd love to, to see, 'cause you know, is, is it more on like the angle, like on the front, or which, like, so it's hard for me, I don't, I don't know exactly.
So he does have, we literally use, I think it was two of his pictures, right, from their website?
I just pulled them off Google Images. I'm not sure who's-
But the, your white alters, right, that's on the photo.
Okay.
So you'll see where, in the photos, they don't know.
If you stand up in your upper parking lot, you know, the mountain's right ahead. It's, uh, I forget the number of degrees, it's off, off to the right lower corner.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yep.
Um, if, when the board revisits or, or discusses more of this, um, nothing has been decided as yet, correct?
No, no decisions, no notice of decision have been made.
And because there's no decisions, the board has the power or the ability to rescind waivers, do they not?
Yes.
I mean, we could reconsider approvals too, technically, right? So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I think I brought this up at the last meeting briefly, um, probably touch on it more now, but, there are two conditional use permits that are required for this project. One of them is specific for commercial solar arrays, and the other, and there's an application for it, and the other is, um, specific to wetland impact. Um, and it's our-
So-
It's our Water Resource Protection District ordinance. And there is a conditional use permit for any, any wetland impacts, um, which, it doesn't look like the Bigelow Hill Road project has any, but the, the two door street ones definitely do. And I had seen, I had seen an application on either one of those. I hadn't seen any conditional use permit applications. And for the one with the, uh, for the Water Resource Protection District, um, ordinance, there's, there's very specific criteria for issuing that. That need to be followed a little bit like a variance, um, specific criteria. So I haven't seen that application at all, and certainly hasn't been, obviously hasn't been voted on because it involves the, um, Conservation Commission. Um, again, in, in, in a certain capacity, they have fourteen days to visit the site and issue, you know, a formal recommendation. Um, but there were also, I think six or seven other criteria that go along with, with approving a conditional use permit in the Water Resource Protection District. So I hadn't seen that addressed, and I, and I know I can get, I don't know if it was addressed at all. Um, I, I did look at some of the, I did look at some of the engineering plans, and I saw setbacks, and I think it's a fifty-foot typical. Um, our setback is seventy-five, so I don't know if it was something that was overlooked, you know, on, on the engineering side. It's easy to do that because the Water Resource Protection District ordinance is separate from the main zoning ordinance. So it'd be easy to overlook it, but it is there, and it is extensive. And I haven't seen it addressed at, at, in any, in any manner so far.
Uh, it's in our minutes from last week, and, and I assume that, uh, Conservation is looking at it. I did invite Zach to come next week to Conservation, what do you mean?
But it's a planning board, this is a planning, it's a planning board, um, permit, and as a planning board, there's criteria that have to be met, and then the Conservation Commission, you know, they'll, they'll reach out to the Conservation Commission at that point. Um, but there is a very, very spelled out process for the planning board to issue a, uh, conditional use permit for the Water Resource, uh, Protection District.
Do you know if you filled that out?
Carol brought up the Water Resource Protection District ordinance, and we're aware of it, we have been aware of it, and it was our understanding that it was issued under the same conditional use permit. That was part of why Conservation Commission received copies of our plans, all the notices of site blocks, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but these things aren't crystal clear. Sometimes there's some ambiguity. I know we've talked about it during the six or seven meetings that I've been up here. Um, we've kind of addressed and identified all wetlands found on site, both mapped by GIS and mapped in the field by wetlands biologists. Um, and I've also mentioned to you guys a number of times, we're going through the state level alteration of terrain permit that occurs all the sites as well. So I don't have a strong opinion one way or another. Our read, after Carol alerted us that this came up again, was that we have applied for, we have applied via, uh, applied for that same ordinance or under that same ordinance in our package. Or it's our assumption that we did, and that the conditional use permit would cover both. But I'm happy to take your, the board's direction on that.
Should we, you think that, would that be correct, or should it really be filled out separately to keep it separate?
I think you have, you have two options here. One would be to have a separate permit filled out, and the other would be to agree by vote that the application as submitted does a, address the issues around the, that particular ordinance, and, and I, obviously that's the board's decision, but I'm just going to point out that I think part of the, confusion may not be the right word, but when you look at the language of the Water Resources Protection District, first of all, obviously it doesn't say anything about this type of use. You know, and this thing was written whenever it was, I don't remember, of, you know, who's thinking about solar, or just solar arrays. I mean, it just, you know, wasn't on anyone's radar. So the only uses that are addressed, that would be happening inside the district, are roads and, you know, forestry and tree farming, basically. So there, there are no criteria in the ordinance that would provide you with any more information than what you've already gotten from the original application. So that's just, you know, and as far as the process goes, the ordinance says that after, after doing the notice public hearing, you would reject the application if it's determined to not be in compliance with the purpose and intent, or issue a conditional use approval in conjunction with the criteria described above. And those criteria are speaking to forestry and tree farming. So, it's a little fuzzy.
Carol, it's, it's not as fuzzy as you think. If you read, if you read those two things that you're talking about, the tree farming, it says not, including those, but not limited to.
Not limited to, correct.
Which means everything else.
Correct.
Have to follow the same criteria.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Herb. So those criteria, A through E, the board could look at those and determine that those things have been addressed already in the application, or to eliminate any confusion whatsoever, you could have the applicant submit a separate application for a conditional use permit, schedule another public hearing, and presumably review everything that you already have, because I don't know what different, what would come in that's different than what you are, already have.
I think the only substantive difference would be-
So is there an actual, I, I'm looking at the watershed. Is there actual application? It's not in?
Well, there, there is. There is one conditional use permit application that applies to any of the one, two, three, four, five, six uses in the zoning ordinance that are subject to conditional use permit, water resources, uh, cell towers, solar, site ordinance, conservation subdivisions, and campground. So those all would go through a conditional use permit process.
Henry? Well, uh, it's maybe a question to Carol too, but could, could this be resolved by just amending the application to check that other box? Like right now, it's submitted, you know, just conditional use permit with the box checked for commercial scale solar, but not for Water Resources Protection Districts. Wouldn't, isn't one thing to just have the, the application be amended by, by checking it?
I think that, that you could do that if you go back to the language of the, of the wetland ordinance, and if you're all comfortable that those criteria have been addressed in the submittals already, uh, then if anything new needed to come in, then you would have to schedule, you would have to notice that separately for another public hearing.
So, s- in response to that, to me, the, the application procedure has been essentially followed in that the materials depict wetland areas and surface water. I guess there is maybe an issue with the boundary that was depicted.
We're not showing the seventy-five foot setback on the plans. As Herb mentioned, we're showing a fifty and a hundred, but, because that's what's called for on the solar ordinance, but we have, we could, we could add the fifty foot, and that's obviously just another dotted line around the wetland resource areas.
So I, I think that would be port, important to resolve for the Conservation Commission to evaluate the tax. But, uh, the other part was the list of criteria, and I think you're, you're talking about this section that talks about conditional uses.
Yes.
Section B.
Yes, B, B two.
And this, to me, is a list of conditional uses, in, in which case there are two listed so far. Construction of roads or forestry and tree farming. But if you look at the sentence that leads up to those two conditional uses, it says activities including, but not limited to. So my, my read on this is actually that more uses other than construction of roads and forestry and tree farming could be granted, you know, could be a conditional use, based on our interpretation.
Yeah, I don't think we have a objection or a strong preference either way. I think we, you know, spent some time revisiting this, and we looked a lot at the authority and purpose of the ordinance. There's three, there's six total purposes. Three of them for prevention of certain activities, none of which are even close to applicable to what we're doing. And then there's three protection requirements, which we would feel more than need based on our design criteria. So it doesn't feel like a, a big hurdle, um, from an ordinance standpoint to a use standpoint. So I really defer the board on, on how you'd like the paperwork to, to go, but we are of the opinion that a single conditional use permit would cover both.
Sure.
So I think, um, I think Henry's right, uh, for sure, that the activities, including, um, what's- listed but aren't limited to, which means, which absolutely means other things can be considered, but in considering those other things, the criteria, A through, A through E, have to be considered as well. And I'm just wondering if, if this has been, if this has been looked at, these criteria for issuing the conditional use permit for the Water Resource Protection District, because one of them, I'll read two of them real quickly. A, the proposed construction is essential to the use of the land not within the Water Resource Protection District. So the impact to, to the wetlands is essential to the, to the non-wetland area. One of the, one of the projects is at a fifty-something percent coverage, so it's above the thirty-five percent coverage already, so I'm, I'm wondering how the board rationalized that. I'm assuming it hasn't been addressed, because I don't know how you, I don't know how you square that circle. The other one is no reasonable alternative exists which would avoid wetland alteration, or lessen the impact. And again, no, no, nothing exists to lessen the impact of the wetlands. I mean, there's a dredge and fill, obviously, not dredge and fill, but a, an alteration permit that's going to happen to fill in, to fill in some wetlands. And we're doing it at a fifty percent coverage rate, which is fifteen percent over what's typically allowed. So it's, I don't, I'm trying to get my head around how that's, how that's, how that's necessary, how there's no other way around impacting the wetlands. And, and again, this is part of the approving the conditional use permit, these are the things that the board can, should be considering, those, those criteria, and that's two of them. So I'm just wondering...
I could, I don't disagree or agree, but I think the ordinance, if we look at D two, issued, issued conditional use approval in conjunction with the criteria described in section four D. So I don't necessarily disagree that it's A through E, but I don't necessarily agree that it is either, because it just points back to the entire section. And in, in the second one, it's talking about forestry and tree farming, not solar. So it's, it's a little fuzzy there, too.
Right. I think, and I think, I think that's why, I think that's certainly why it's written, because again, when you write the ordinance, you don't know what's coming down, down the pike, so the things that they knew about at the time are, are written, but not limited to that.
Right, but in, in that, in that second part of that, it's, it's specific to forestry and tree farming. I'm not saying I've made my decision on it, I'm just saying, I gotta weigh this out.
Unfortunately, if it's, if, if only forestry and, and tree farming is allowed, then we're, then that's it. Solar farms are not allowed in the Water Resource Protection District, so...
Well, I didn't mean that, I meant the criteria related.
Yeah.
Those criteria are listed underneath. It's, it's semantics right now, and, and it's an old ordinance, and I think we're gonna have to deliberate, deliberate, deliberate. What makes sense?
I think one of the points for our Water Resource Protection District, and I'll just, I'll leave it at this, our, our ordinance is pretty comprehensive for wetlands in the town of Troy. The state's is not. If you want to fill in wetlands, if you want to get a dredge and fill permit, if you pay the fee, you'll fill in the wetlands. It's up to the towns to protect their own, to protect their own wetlands. We have a seventy-five-foot buffer. The state's is zero. They don't, they don't even have one. So ours, our, so towns' ordinances typically are more stringent than the state because it's straight, the state is very loose for their wetland protections. So just...
Well, it makes sense for the board on this one. You know, Conservation Commission, we need to begin to discuss this stuff. Do we want to wait for an answer from them to feel maybe more in-depth with their permit? Or? I'd, I'd like to understand a little more about the relationship between this ordinance and the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. I haven't had a chance to read in detail, just to understand who does what first. I think, I think, oh, this doesn't, this term is falling to Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission is probably more involved in wetlands, so they have more, they have a broader knowledge base than access in the state to give you answers. And we're, how do we know what the effect on wetlands is? We don't rely on the board, that board would be Conservation. Oh, yeah. I was wondering if you, if we can table this, Conservation, you mean, next week, if they give us an answer back on this, and then, secondly, based on what they're suggesting or recommending or asking, if anything, if we need to have them fill out a whole another one, be more detailed, or if we want to check the box, do you think that'd be a better option for the board? To wait for an answer?
Can you say that one more time? What's the question of the Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission is currently looking at this, which was Henry and sent to the Conservation Commission, this Water Resource Protection District ordinance.
Yep.
So we're looking over at the Conservation Commission. Herb is suggesting that we are, the question is, should we just do this as a separate conditional use application for this ordinance, the Water Resources?
I follow that, and you want to ask the Conservation Commission, or you want...
Their, their thoughts, I, I would like you guys to come anyway, so we have questions for you, Conservation's questions for you. But I wonder if you, Plan Board wants the thoughts, the Conservation Commission on here, like... I think I can answer it based on the ordinance, and I think it is what you said. It says, if the proposed activity is in or abuts the Water Resource Protection District, the application will be referred from us to the Troy Conservation Commission to determine whether or not any of the plans will be affected, and if so, what the impact should be, then the Conservation Commission does the site, site review, and then makes a written recommendation back to the Planning Board. So really, we couldn't decide on this until they get back to us anyways?
So we're saying none of that happened? It wasn't, we didn't reference the, we didn't refer the plans to the Conservation Commission? They didn't review the plans? I mean, they wrote us a letter. We want to just go through it under the, under the veil of specifics to the ordinance?
Well, I'm not sure the Conservation Commission is fully finished. I know we discussed the wildlife impact, we haven't discussed the wetlands impact.
Okay, I follow that. Thank you.
So there's kind of multiple, unfortunately, multiple sections here.
Carol?
Yeah?
Because I'm wondering, where, where are you at with your permit, your wetlands permit with DES, and whether or not the Conservation Commission has seen that? I'm thinking that might help them and, you know, answer some of these questions.
You were waiting to do that one, weren't you?
Yeah, I mean, I think as we talked, our DES permit and our alteration of terrain permit are literally done, ninety percent, waiting for this board to make their decision on the final plans, so we can do the final kind of true-up from the approved plans to the state-level plans. So they're just sitting there. Once we go apply formally to DES, Conservation Commission is a commenting party on the state-level...
Did you submit Conservation Commission copying the DES?
We haven't submitted yet.
Possibly. See, I want that to answer some questions.
It's the permit application. It wouldn't answer any questions that they haven't seen. Basically, if, if we were to restart the whole process, they would get the exact same plan set that they've already seen, with an extra setback of seventy-five feet, just to show that. And obviously, we'd be more on the nose with telling them, please comment, not only with respect to environmental, but with respect to the zoning or the wetland ordinance.
So your wetland report that is in all three of the narratives that basically covers...
It's the exact same thing.
Okay.
That's, that's why we were under the impression that everything was covered, all the boards were referring, and the conditional use permit would cover that.
But that's your appendix B of wetland report, correct?
I don't know what appendix it is, but certainly, and then the full wetlands delineation and report.
Yeah, do you have a map in here that shows, that folds out, correct?
Yep, and then all those, all of that mapped area is shown on our full plan set with fifty, a hundred, a fifty, a hundred and fifty-seven.
This one, correct?
Yes, sir, that's the delineation map, and then there should be a thirty-page report that we've prepared.
Yep, the thirty-page report prior to this.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Conservation Commission isn't looking at that, um, we just have not finished, unfortunately, against your time, for you, we have not finished. So once the Conservation Commission gives a decision, the Plan Board will decide whether or not we just want to check the box or keep it more thorough, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, I, sorry, I looked at the calendar. Go ahead. Okay, to enter a motion around this, and I was going to move that we consider, we move forward with, with Rewild modifying their conditional use application to check the second box, so it's a single conditional, conditional use application, and that we refer the wetlands issued to the Conservation Commission.
Second, and Carol, that was your, wasn't that your advice, that we have a motion to agree that's reasonable, of course?
Yes, and then at, at some point, we would have, in addition to the other votes, a separate vote on these criteria from the wetland ordinance.
So approval of this motion just means we're moving this to the Conservation Commission officially, officially again, so to speak? Give us a direction to move forward. And rather than him doing another conditional use application, we're just combining, so long as everything's been satisfied.
And so the expectation would be that would reopen, or open, or whatever word you want to use, the fourteen-day time period by which you guys would get a recommendation from the commission? Is that what, I mean, that's what we're meeting up to, right? That's what you guys are looking for, is a recommendation from the Planning Board, or whatever it calls for?
Conservation.
Thank you.
Correct. That it does as a fourteen-day...
That's in the wetland ordinance.
Yeah. Any further discussion on that? You want to repeat the motion, Zach, before we move on? Yes, I, I moved that we allow Rewild to amend their conditional use permit by checking the wetlands box, and we refer the, the application to the Conservation Commission for a recommendation. And the fourteen days, does that start, do we need it sent tomorrow, or is that starting? So I can make sure the Conservation Commission has...
Well, technically, that would have started from when the application was, we see, was, was accepted by the board, but we're kind of beyond that point now, so I guess you probably can...
Yeah, there are, just for clarification, there are two fourteen days. Fourteen, you got to do the site, site inspection within fourteen days, and then make a decision within fourteen days. Or a recommendation, or a decision. I didn't give you much time. You still have to contact the state for questions. I guess it was...
Does it make sense to not, does it make sense to keep them separate under this, under these circumstances, to keep them separate so that you don't, so you're already outside of the fourteen, fourteen-day window with the original referral to the Conservation Commission? If it's another, if it's, if you don't combine the two, it'll be a separate conditional use application in fourteen days, it'll start now, for the, the first fourteen days.
I'm sorry, everybody. He's saying if you split it into a separate conditional use, not checking the box, that means that new conditional use starts fourteen days now, we're not past the trend of work.
Rather than paint yourself into a corner, if you, if you just attach it to the last one, the last one rocked that, that ship has sailed, so your fourteen-day window is already gone, your two fourteen-day windows are already gone, if you attach it to the original, the original application.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a public hea, another public hearing issue there, too.
Right, so it almost makes sense to just separate the two and treat it as its own conditional use permit application, so you're not outside, outside of the bounds and your time, time constraints. Just my opinion.
And then they have to, so the seventy-five-foot boundary for that application, correct?
Yeah. If I'm understanding that correctly, Zach, that's just a matter of adding one line at a time.
Yeah, I don't think that's a, that's not a separate anything. It's an adjustment to the plan.
Okay.
I think it's just visually show impact, help show impact of a seventy-five-foot interval instead of a fifty and a one hundred, and the fifty and one hundred came from the solar ordinance.
You just be changing the fifty to a seventy-five?
That's it. We probably need both on there.
Yeah, it's always, yeah.
We probably need both on there, because we want the same set of plans to be, I mean, it's going to be tricky for the board, right, because then we'll have two conditional use permits, two approved plan sets, and we want to keep them the same. So even though they're separate, we want them the same date, same, same rep.
I'm, I don't think we should create a second permit for this process. I think because it should have so clearly been part of the original submission to begin with, I think we just have to live with the fact that we started late, or we didn't completely follow the timeline. We did start the referral process, but...
We missed the timeline.
So you could start your fourteen days from the, from the date at which you made this decision to, to visit this, which is today.
Okay.
And so that's really the starting point, because today is the day that you've all agreed that this should be considered. I mean, that's what I think, and obviously, that's your decision, but...
Conservation, I mean, it's more than that, so...
Yeah, I haven't heard back from the state.
So, schedule an inspection within fourteen, and then fourteen days of site inspection, so that's twenty-eight days, or, I mean, technically, you could, this could be read, you schedule a site inspection three weeks from now. I'm not saying that would be desirable, but it's a, it's a, it's at least twenty-eight days on paper, right?
On paper, yeah. I guess the Conservation Commission will figure out that, and I think we just can finish our motion.
Yeah. I don't think the motion changed, though, right? On what?
Under second.
Under second.
Under second, Jack, your motion. Any further discussion?
Remembering what the language for the public hearing notice?
We won't know that until Conservation gives the site inspection to the Planning Board.
What do you mean, public hearing notice, man?
When we open this public hearing, there's a notice, and it would affect conditional use of, they were speaking.
So these are part of the...
It didn't, didn't specify.
Doesn't specify?
Talks about construction of solar array and associated site improvements, lists the properties, mentions the application, merits of the proposal.
That's not listing any specific conditional use permit.
Correct. At least not, not the, I don't have the consent on one or something, but I think it's the same.
It should be the same consent on one, because you're reading off what the notice was.
Yeah.
It should all be the same.
I think it must, it's the same.
It's a not issue.
Yeah.
So on that, do, if Conservation Commission comes back with their answer, do you have to do another public hearing?
No.
Technically, no, you're just, you're just receiving information about the date, so you just, you don't have to do another public hearing.
Right.
You just got to take it in.
You'll respond to those comments.
Respond to the comments, make a decision. Respond to the comments, make a decision.
Yeah.
And, and the wetland, if information was in the application.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion put forward by Jack?
Aye.
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 Abstentions?
Oh, sorry.
Nays? Passes. So today is the day, we're gonna consider fourteen days. Did you ever make contact information of these? There isn't, there it goes.
Mr. Chairman, if you just restate that motion, just so I can issue it.
Jack, can you restate it? Yeah, um, move to, um, to allow, accept that Rewild's amendment to the conditional use permit, adding the wetlands, um, request, and refer the, uh, information or application to the conservation commission for their, uh, their review and recommendation.
Jack, I should have brought this up, but I think we mean applications plural, as in like all, all three.
Exactly, all three, right.
Okay, can you do that?
So.
Please.
And again, everything's through this board, from which this board will request the feedback from the conservation, which is outlined in the water protection district ordinance. Okay. Okay, and you can pass my contact information to cons comm, to the extent they want to reach out to me to schedule the site blocks.
So that was to her. So, back to the other public comment we had about the waivers. The board feel they need to revisit waivers, discuss. Well, at the, I think we'll discuss them inside. Do you feel we've aired it anyway? I guess it's kind of, do you feel like we need to?
I did vote no on two of, three waivers, um, and I do think that in this meeting, we were, I, I'm gonna try and find a spot in here where I addressed it in my letter, um. When we were discussing the class six building ordinances and that, and what it took, we, we kind of moneyed that up, um, from several different people in here, and we discussed various things in there, um. You know, so in that waiver, for the, the class six part of it, right, our ordinance says an approved road, right? So that would be a class five. An approved road would technically be put before the town to be approved, or we maintain it for five years. So unless they want to hold up for five years, we're gonna talk about the town, we give it five years. You know, so not only bypassing the ordinance, we kind of took the right of whether that was a class five or class six out of the hands of residents, um. I don't know, because when we were discussing our explanation on that, and Dick was here for that, um, again, we kind of moneyed it, and was a little bit misleading around residential development on a class six road. You know, there was a lot of discussion around that, it wasn't really pertaining to that, and how that looks, and, and whether or not we can issue building permits for that. I think this is a different kind of thing, I don't, I just want to make sure that all the board members are understanding on that, and we discuss it, and are, are voting on that waiver properly. Because again, when we discussed that whole section, we, we brought to the discussion around that road. And I voted no on the other two. So I guess that's a long way to say it, and if I, if we wanted to revisit, I would support that.
And I, I voted aye, yes, on the waiver, for a couple of reasons. One, I think the reason for, um, for not allowing that class six development on a class six road is for safety reasons and the potential cost of the town. You know, you can have a building way out on the road, and it could be expensive to plow or do whatever, provide safety. So I think where it's being upgraded to a class five, and it's a relatively short section of road, I think both of those issues, um, come out. And again, my understanding of the waiver is, we're not saying it's a go, we're just saying it's a possibility. And the selectmen will be making the decision about whether to approve the development and issue the building, building permit on the class, on the road upgraded to a class five, or, or to, as I understand it, uh, put it before the town. So the decision hasn't been made, but the planning board has. Um, and I think, I'm gonna recommend that we, I'm gonna make the case that when we send it to the selectmen, that we recommend it as being accepted as an upgraded road to class five, but remain class six. But we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Right now, I'm not in favor of us reconsidering our, uh, our waiver decisions.
I don't feel that we have, um, far. I do not think that I would change my vote in further discussion on the waiver decisions, that I don't think that we're going to bring any new information, that we would just keep circling back on the same thing. Yeah.
Do you feel that, yeah, it feels like for both waivers, just kind of leave where we're at? I mean, technically, whether they're building or not, it's up to the select board to build it. These are just design standards, as I understand it.
Yeah, I mean, it's still up to us to.
Right, to be a little more specific, i- if it stopped here, it wouldn't even make it that far, right? So there is some, you know, there's a power here before it gets to that spot. But, but yes, there is still the opportunity for it to not pass at that level. But if it didn't pass here, it wouldn't make it to that level very much.
We, we've kind of been having like, an extended public hearing process. I think we closed it like two meetings ago, but we keep having, you know, more people to join, which is okay, it happens, but we haven't really moved past, like, that hearing more stuff to have discussions, just among ourselves about the merits and, you know, whatever comply, you know, how it looks to the master plan, how you must feel about it, so.
Right, and even with, with waivers in place, there's still a possibility for us to just not, uh, do that.
We really haven't sat down and discussed, but we, we skipped discussing it last week, because we had, I watched people out, and we just, we just did not discuss it.
We had some others that requested some input, that were not present at other meetings, which is gracious to allow.
Yeah, even though technically, other, you know, so. I think we should probably get back to discussing this, going through it, I think.
Yeah, at this meeting, we have to, we have to agree on an extension to our timeline, you know, to keep being able to consider it, being able to consider it. You know, we're at our, we've passed our sixty days, and so.
Yeah, because we put extension to today's date on the quest of Rewild, because they were not ready for the last meeting of August 21st.
Yeah, so we should s- sketch out what our next, what the schedule looks like, um, what, you know, it's, we can, can discuss merits as a board tonight, but might not finish.
Well, I think we need to start. Whether we finish or not, I think we really need to. So, say, you know, twenty-four. So if you're to base an extension, we should discuss the extension first, correct?
Yeah, I think it, it has to, it has to work with reasonable time to hear back from the conservation commission.
Which would be twenty-eight days from today's date, so that'd be the second of October, which is also Wednesday, first Wednesday of March. That gives twenty-eight days, conservation has to get back to us. That gives them all the time in the world, so it's gonna be twenty-eight days.
Give us one full meeting to, I guess, debate.
One full scheduled meeting unless we decide we need to meet more. So yes, we have the eighteenth to be the next meeting, and then the second would be that final.
Yeah.
Do we feel twenty, October second would be a good extension? Gives us timeline.
Sounds right to me.
Can that work for you?
It's gotta be, yeah, it's gonna be.
Yep, I accept, I extension the, the meeting of October second, did you say?
Yes, it's the first Wednesday of October.
I think it won't be, it'll be, uh, the time.
Hopefully, it won't be, we'll take a round of that.
Well, hopefully, we get a discussion done in the next meeting, um, and I can announce my thoughts. We'll try and join here, then.
So we need official motion for the extension to October second?
Yes, because that needs to be agreed upon, and also, I think, I don't know if I heard it, I, I think we should vote on whether or not you're going to reconsider the waiver.
Okay.
You discussed it, but I don't think you voted.
We did not vote. So while we visit that, so. Vote to reconsider waivers decided on so far. This is a vote to consider the wa- waivers.
For this, a motion to, to do that?
Yes, so we need that. So motions to reconsider the waivers, we've discussed, we're all in on.
Second.
So all those in favor of reconsidering waivers we've discussed, oh, is that all right? Ayes? Nays?
No.
Nay. Abstentions?
Abstained.
How many of those did you have?
Three. Three.
Three.
Two yays, I was in the way. And nays, and you abstained?
I'm sorry, what was the count?
Two yays, and you said yay, correct?
Two, two, three, one.
Two, three, one. So motion does not go through. So onto the next motion, motion to extend the timetable for the three Rewild applications to October second, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays. So you want, Carol and Jack want to go over your, sorry, what? You guys want to go over your notice of decision you guys drafted, okay, this is going to discuss?
Briefly, because this is probably going to be changed, you know, after the other information comes in, but I guess just for your information, um, what we did was, first of all, just reformat it a little bit to make it look like your typical notices.
Yeah, so this.
It's the decision and the findings and the conditions, and the, the additional information that Rewild provided, procedural history and documents submitted. You know, we don't typically have that in a notice, so I shifted those to the back and call it an attachment. So it's still there, I mean, certainly, you know, nothing, no harm in having it here, but we don't typically do that. So I moved it out into, you know, the main part of the document. And then Jack spent a huge amount of time going through this very thoroughly, and identified, you know, some, some terminology that, that needed to be made consistent with, you know, other, other parts of the ordinance. And we pulled some things out of findings that seemed to be redundant, because they ended up as conditions of approval. So that was another thing that was done. And then there's, as you can see, a fairly lengthy list of conditions. Many of these were drafted by, by Rewild's attorney. And we, you know, went through those and tweaked where it seemed to make sense, and added a, a little bit of other language, and left a few things here that are still, for example, number four, the, uh, the hours of operation. There seemed to be, I didn't remember whether or not we had talked about it, and so anyway, that's why there's a bold there, the Saturday one, uh, had to strike through with a bold to be discussed, because I don't know if we ever really settled on that. So at any rate, we think that these conditions capture everything that we have discussed here over the last several meetings, and again, this will probably be revised again after comments come back from con com and we see where that goes, so. And, and Zach has received a copy of this, so he's not taken by surprise.
I mean, the only thing you just mentioned, again, I think there were some references to hours of operation, and I think you mean construction, right? Because this is an unmanned, right?
During construction, yes.
Two terms, because we can't.
Yes, during construction, yes, I mean, it is inherently, I just, I just didn't say that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I said hours of operation during construction, shall be spelled as well.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the intent is not, is to control when people.
Construction was, yep, totally.
Yeah.
But I think that technically covered it, hours of operation during construction shall be as follows.
Yeah.
So we don't think we have to change that, do we?
Nope, I just, I was saying, it's just the way it was read, just a little bit, just to make sure it was.
I just didn't, I didn't say that. And then, you know, all of the, the discussion that was had previously about the, about the road, we deal with that, and let's see, what number is that? I'm not finding it, but it's. Uh, yes, number four, so activity, you know, what, what is going to happen on the road in terms of, you know, the condition and, and, you know, how it can be used? That's, that all lies with the selectmen, so it's relative to what we were discussing earlier that, that Jack explained to, to the public. It's relative to what we were discussing earlier, that, and that Jack explained to, to the public that there is no part of the decision that, that you make or the waiver that you approved that has any effect at all of what the selectmen decide to do about that road, so that's, it's a, it's a non-issue for this. So that's the short version.
I, I have one, one thing I'd like to discuss when I was reading through this. There was a lot of comments from the public around their concerns about traffic, and, and Zach went through very, in a quite detailed way, what they were gonna move on that road, the construction vehicles, that it was gonna be built as onsite, so it's not, the stops aren't coming out, the chips aren't coming out, the fill's not going in, the only thing that we're bringing in is this, is the sand for the trenches. And I think that's important for the public to know about that, because I think he's, you know, limit, somewhat limiting the amount of traffic on that road, so I didn't know if that would be appropriate to put in the conditional use, what the nature of the traffic will be on that road during construction. What I just listed, is there any, you know, could we come up with a list that, that you described before, or would that, you find that that would cause a hardship, or?
No, I think I would probably refer to, maybe, construction staging directives from a planning board are not uncommon. Typical construction orders of operation are listed in the permit itself in the notes, so I would say it's probably already written in there what we're gonna do. But maybe a notation in the finding or in.
The conditions.
Referencing to the notes, as we did on a couple of different places, could make sense. But it's fairly typical, and I, I would imagine it's in our site use plan, plan that will make it over the building permit plan, and obviously, the building permit plan's gonna be two hundred pages long, um, but the notes will be as detailed.
I would, I would, in particular, just for the public's concerns, I would like, I would like to see it in the conditions along with the.
Yes, construction staging condition is not uncommon.
Okay.
With minimal material removal.
Yeah, however we word it, I mean, we gotta make sure it's covered with what his description is, but it sounds like there's not, oh, other than bringing the vehicles in, bringing the panels in.
I think you do have a provision in there that you do say there might be log removal partial.
The log removal, not, not the chips.
Yeah.
Yeah, what doesn't get chips will be removed.
Yeah, I mean, those sites have been harvested for the high-quality wood three or four times over the last decade, so I, I don't imagine there's gonna be a lot there, but.
I just hate to say it.
Yeah.
No, we just, we obviously like.
Thing is, uh, Petos aren't doing logging right now, there's another family that they were logging right now, I guess, we assigned the timber cut for them, I can't remember the name of, just after, or?
They're just north of us, they've been asking to use our parcel to access, and I unfortunately had to say no, so more if I, that someone's gonna say we started construction on our parcel here. It could be a good neighbor, but, but yes, the parcel is just north of ours.
So the other thing I'd like to comment on is just, um, around the impact analysis. My view of the requirement on the impact analysis is they have to do one. Um, but there's not, in the ordinance, there's not a criteria that we should do a outweighing of the benefit to the town or, or benefit of the project versus the impact, so I, I think that's something.
And Jack, where's that requirement written in our regs?
It's in the zoning ordinance, okay.
It's in, um, in the ordinance, it's, uh, for E, impact analysis. All application must address the extent to which, if any, the project would impact standard living, real estate value, rural character, wildlife or economic health. And there are, there are statements to that effect in the application, I mean, there isn't an actual impact analysis per se, but there is, at least, there's been a written response to this requirement.
Yeah, and my, my concern, and maybe something we look at in the future, is I'd like to see that extended, that we actually make the decision about the impact analysis, you know, and.
You know, I, I think, I think that, that falls, what I would have liked.
Yeah, we, if we're not having something that says impact analysis at the top, we have to say in our findings what we construe as describing impacts.
Yeah, I mean, basically.
The planning board understood these.
We understand the impacts, we're not making a judgment on whether we should approve or not based on that.
I mean, it hasn't, Jack is right, it hasn't been spelled out, I mean, if, by approval, you're essentially approving everything, but in the findings in this draft, it does say that in number three, the impact study meets the requirements of the ordinance, that's it, there is no other detail, but at least it's been said that, in your opinion, assuming that this has been voted to be approved, you would have agreed that, that it meets that, so that's just something Jack raises a good point, that we should be, you know, kind of.
We should be evaluating the impacts, not just.
Yes, paying more attention to that, yes, exactly.
And.
It's funny that you have a ordinance that requires an impact statement, but then, okay.
I, I, I agree, I didn't catch it, I didn't catch it.
The last thing around, been there for a while. What page is it on, you want to?
Fifteen. Um, thank, thanks Carol and Jack for working on this, I had just two quick things that caught my eyes, I haven't read this all the way through yet. But, um, on page four, where it mentioned certificate of occupancy a few times, is that applicable to non-habitable, like, uh, filming, is a certificate of occupancy actually provided?
Good, good question, I don't, I don't know, that's a.
No, it's not.
So.
They're not getting there, so.
So that affects ten, twelve, and thirteen.
Yep, so.
What do you guys call certificate completion?
We don't, we don't, this is, we don't. That comes from the Selectmen's Office, and the issuance of those is extremely, certificates of COs in this count are essentially a five or six-year-old thing. And they've only been ever issued on residential property.
For a commercial or an industrial property, do you guys have some type of?
No.
Certificate?
No.
Confirming the project?
Nope.
Has been built to this.
Seems like a good idea. But I mean, we got to pull a building permit, we need to say, and you're done.
You're done. Yeah.
We can address that tomorrow night, so.
Okay, maybe that's fine, but I've always thought it is almost.
Whatever you pulled a permit for, for the garage, you still won't have a certificate of.
We don't close them out or anything.
We're cro- well, we historically know, but we are much better at it. Right, Eddie?
We just work.
Um, just to get back to impact analysis, I was just, I'm flipping through one of the applications, we do have an impact analysis. You know, it can always be better, it can be done to a higher criteria, but it's appendix D, where we do address the four criteria, visual, living, character, and economic, and so.
Oh yeah, you submit, you got the requirement to submit it, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you guys know there's, there's something there, you can always try bust or better or whatever.
No, I, I, I agree that you got the requirement to submit it, it's what we do.
Carol, can I just say one thing?
Yep.
It's not, it's sort of slightly a sidebar here about, about the conditional use permit process. A lot of discussions tonight, obviously, about, about this waiver. And I, I certainly understand how people could feel like you have an ordinance and the first thing you do is violate it. You know, but that's really not the case, there is, the reason that this process exists specifically is to make it easier for the planning board to work with an application, and easier for the applicant to be able to work with the planning board. It eliminates the need to go for a variance every time there's some thing in the ordinance that can't be met. A lot of these things that historically either permitted by right or permitted by special exception, but that, of course, means a trip to the zoning board. And the special exception criteria are not necessarily really planning-related, you know, specifically related much to the things that a planning board does through site plan review. So the conditional use permit process is intended to take the place of that, so that you can negotiate with people and, and not have a really cumbersome process. And you already have it, as I said, six uses are already allowed in the ordinance by conditional use permit, including the water resources, and if we've got this in the very beginning, and they had come in with their, with their CUP application for that, you could have issued a waiver from that one as well, because, you know, that's how, that's how conditional use permit operates, is it authorizes the planning board to grant waivers, and you get to decide, and it's difficult, I get, for the public, they sometimes just, you know, it appears that you're just shirking your duty and just, you know, throwing the baby out with the, with bathwater, but, uh, you know, I just, I have a different view of that. And, and of course, in my opinion, I think you all gave a lot of thought and had a lot of discussion about that, so. You know, I mean, I don't get to vote, but, you know, I, I didn't, I mean, I certainly feel that you just, you know, cavalierly.
I don't figure it out either, but sometimes my, my, I can't say I'm trying to avoid public as much as possible, sometimes I just drag this out.
I don't have anything else on this, but I have one other question I wanted to pose to everyone before we wrap up this solar projects.
Shoot.
Okay, it's kind of like, how can we, uh, do our due diligence between now and the next meeting? I guess that's the, the short question, like, we did, we did the public hearing phase, we've all heard a lot about impacts, but I feel personally, like, at the next meeting, I have to have, like, some thought-out bullets about why I feel this is, you know, persistent or not, maybe town's ordinance, what should be approved or not. And I just wanted to share that, but also, maybe brainstorm, um, resources that I'm gonna consider to do that and see if there are others. The, the one at the top of the list is the, the town's master plan. I mean, that's the planning board's kind of document that we maintain, that's supposed to guide our land use decisions. Super high level, but I think we probably should, I'm gonna be looking at that, I'm sure if you guys do as well.
The unfortunate thing about that is you'd have to, I don't wanna say five, but it's fuzzy, because it doesn't present without anything about solar, because it was never consideration at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
Clearly, this, this brought residential, quiet, um.
Yeah.
Scenic, like, you can certainly infer.
So I can say, you know, solar panels are very quiet, you know, solar panels are very quiet, they're not gonna, they're not gonna harm our, uh, whatever, the noise level I enjoy, but it would be up to us to, to interpret, you know, division and goals, et cetera.
And maybe I'll observe or spoke on.
Yeah, we can use our newer, the newer information, but. Anyway, this is, we haven't, uh, this is bigger projects, maybe the biggest dollar value project the boards for, um, since I've been on, and. It's just fun here if there are other things, other ideas people had about how they're gonna consider the, the merits, so to speak.
Well, one thing I'll be looking at and thinking about is relative to the approval and the conditions.
Related to the approval, and whether the.
Whether the conditions, um, are sufficient to, to make sure it's gonna work, work well for the town. So I've never done the decision-making before, how do you kind of vote on the overall thing in the conditions, it's, which one, chicken and egg, which ones come, which, which do you do first?
They go together.
Yeah, they go together.
You agree to the conditions and then you take the vote on, on that application subject to these conditions.
If you agree on all the conditions, it's probably, probably pretty hard to say.
Yeah.
I'm not voting for it. On the other hand, if you don't agree with any of the conditions, it's real easy.
Right, but we don't vote on the individual conditions or anything, it's more of a consensus on the.
Well, if there are no issues with the conditions, then you vote on the things at home.
Yeah, it's approval conditions or deny, it's.
I suppose in that sense, you could, we could, I'm just thinking out loud, you could have a motion to approve as written, and if that fails, you could have another motion to approve with conditions and discuss conditions after that. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud.
I think the, the condition, the conditions are, that are coming together well good, and I'm definitely in favor of those getting refined further.
So the next sequence is, um, let's see, the, the, so wetland stuff, and then, then we consider everything after that.
Well, I think we should work on everything else waiting on that.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna hold up, we wanna wait until they get back to where everything else, that's just one piece.
I, yeah, I would prefer to have our next meeting be strictly around discussing this, so that I can give a part of it, because I probably won't be here for, well, I know I won't be here for the second. I may be able to, I mean, via Zoom, but hardly not.
Kyle, one thing that struck me when I read the, the, the town ordinance on the water resources, and I read Rewild's stuff, is Rewild has a definition of wetlands?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if it's the US Army Corps, I don't know what their, what their classification is, but the, in the town, we've got a different set of definitions of what a wetland is.
Nothing different.
Yeah, so I didn't know if they're equi- you know, I don't, in what, Rewild, you know, went through the specifics and outlined them all, and I assume, I'd like to assume that we use their definition, you know, their.
Yeah, well, you use their definition line up to what our definitions are and what our requirements are for each definition. Is how I, I do it. The other thing is you all want to just assume.
Yes, these three attributes.
I see.
So I'm.
They're pretty, they're, 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 they match.
Yeah, I think we're, I think that's, that works. But we definitely need to put this on the work program. Since nineteen ninety-four, I don't recall what was invented in two thousand and three, but that's because that was, in those five years I wasn't here.
They added, but not limited to.
Probably, yes.
I should cover everything, it's clear as mud.
Yeah.
I do like Eddie's idea of checking the master plan. I was just gonna go back through everything and check the list over, basically.
Yeah, I, I, there throughout the process, there'd be notes of all the, the residents that had complaints and, and verified or or was not able to verify some, and that's the, um, from home values to fire hazards to, um, I, I know Matt's letter addresses leaking, which seems to be like cooled solar panels are not really a thing, right? And haven't been for quite some time, so, um, or, or not misused.
This is solar photovoltaic, so.
Right.
There's nothing there, it's not solar heat or solar thermite, or use the collectors to boil. A lot of this is. This is.
Well, don't laugh, some of us have done our houses.
No, no.
From nineteen seventy-seven.
I knew people that needed to move, and it worked tremendously, so, yeah. But yeah, so, uh, you know, there was a lot that was brought up in here, and I've done a lot of research on that, if you have any to share.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's, that's what I see as the board deliberation part, you know, we stop hearing from them, and we talk to each other about what we heard.
Right, I agree, one hundred percent.
The landowner's still wanted, right?
The landowner still wants it, right? Okay, I, well, there was a comment made, it wasn't in South Carolina, or North Carolina, whatever, they can't be here on a regular basis. I mean, we met quite often, meeting with this. They still want this, they're gonna get the benefit. It is private property, if they meet all the criteria, you know, it's.
I think the town's argument is that they they needed a waiver for each project. Um, and that we, you know, it it fell in a time where we just redid our solar ordinances and the town approved it. And it does feel for them like we are waiving three. You know, even though it's individual, that we're waiving three major criteria that we had in there. For that.
You guys probably picked up on this, but I didn't want to interrupt earlier, but the the waiver for Dort West was a setback from the crematorium. Which part of the reason we missed the twenty-first meeting was because Carol notified us a couple of days prior. That that crematorium parcel was not late industrial. It's kind of a little island there. So in the revised plans that you guys should have received on the twenty-eighth. We modified that, we put the road outside the fence and we added a twenty-foot vegetated buffer. So that fence is now, I think it's.
Didn't matter, about forty-five.
Forty-five, is that what it is? I was gonna say forty or forty-five feet um, from that boundary, so.
So that waiver's made basically in order for it now?
I think it's still fifty. It's still fifty, so just wanted to make sure you guys were clear on that one.
So that waiver, does that have to be reworded because it's for a different set of measurements?
No.
Do we have to revise that?
I haven't seen those plans yet, I have to come by and pick up the plans so I can have a look at them.
We looked at that, I certainly defer to your opinion, but we looked at that, but the waiver was made, waiver two, the fifty-foot setback. And we went to five and then back to forty.
Yeah.
And, you know, frankly, if the board's really uncomfortable with waivers and whatnot, we could try to eliminate that one and just move from forty to.
Might as well make sure there wasn't like a conflict there, because it was talking about previous plan, that you're not changing plan. But it's just for that fifty-foot marker, it doesn't matter.
Right, right.
Just wanted to be sure we're missing step those and slap us on the second. So that waiver's still there, you know, just that.
Well, there's other papers that we can prove that this board does the same thing, the town voted on the ordinance, it was approved and we still.
I, again, I'm just saying.
Nothing any different, nothing any new, so, I mean.
I'm just saying, we're, we're, we have three basic criteria in there and even though there's an individual, they're unique to each project. We're, we're basically waiving all three. So I I'm just, I'm speaking as like a, on behalf of residents that have spoken with me. And I kinda get it, right, like we, we have certain ones in there, it's not like we're waiving one, we're, we're waiving them all.
It, our, our first version of our solar ordinance, it it did not have lot coverage, right?
It did not lot coverage.
Silent on that.
It had almost nothing.
Did it have the um, component about class five road access?
No.
I highly.
So it's like we would've, we would've run into this no matter what.
Eventually.
Yeah. I guess in that case, it would've had to go to the zoning board and that would've satisfied like others.
Well, if we didn't have any, it would be a class five, but even, we had discussions.
Right, and if they were, you know, lot coverage requirement, that wouldn't have been an issue, they wouldn't have needed a waiver from that. So.
And if there was more requirement of class five, that would be a discussion.
You can talk gifts all day, but that's not the case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the the class five wasn't the one.
It was.
Oh, okay.
Five, oh, okay.
I know, I talked.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Tessa, I'm gonna start getting too much. And the condition, and the, and the condition use. I think we had a definition too of what was what. On utility, they didn't bring that utility before. Yeah. I don't know if they would've been able to build or not, I mean, it's, have to go through it and see.
Yeah.
But doesn't matter, right?
Right.
Right.
Now, on this point, I'll give you an input, I believe this is the first solar project, so it's not.
Yeah, so I mean, consider issue two for us is.
It's unique.
No, I think the ordinance held up relatively well, I mean, after this, there are things I I see with this project that we might wanna revisit.
Absolutely.
And we, we knew that would happen, that once something hit the ordinance, we're gonna have to change it because.
Well, that's the future, right? I think you sat with us and you helped us, what, what, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna frame that, I don't wanna. You, you consulted with us and you actually were, were pretty transparent and. I think we chose some things that you admitted would be difficult for you in there, so it wasn't like you withheld or. Steered us in any direction.
The lot coverage was, was always the big one, the first or second time I was in here that I was against. Because in my mind, the lot coverage was a spirit of don't cover a small lot with tons of solar and blah, 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 but. We've got our setbacks, considerable setbacks for those projects. In the, in the recent letter, I provided a couple of elevation profiles, did you guys see those?
Yeah.
And did they kinda make sense what was happening?
We do.
I can see those, yeah.
They do, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you saw Henry's, Henry's there was, R G I S, very cool.
Yes, just so you guys can, so you guys can understand that, I drew the line from the two subject properties we discussed. The, the highway, and I was gonna say the cemetery off the highway.
I think that's on the, yeah.
Berry Farm, and so I think, like you brought, there is a hump in between Berry Farm and the location. Yes, you can see the top of Bigelow Hill, but we're not at the top of the Bigelow Hill, so it looks like we're below that hump. And then there's another hump, um, it's actually the property that the town owns just to the east of the water treatment facility. From the cemetery, that is another high point in between the sightline, so.
Okay, so is this, is this graphic saying that there's, if this sightline to, oh yeah. Is it, the graphics saying it's blocked?
Yeah. So where it is from the high, so this is the.
I didn't see a such a question.
This is the topography, so we're one point three miles away. And at some point, right near the elevation, ten sixty-two goes all the way up to eleven eighty-five. And then all the way down to that, our sightline without trees, without anything, you're still.
In that rich part, I can't see.
Where is the solar floor from?
People on them, I don't think they're there.
So you, so you want to say.
Staring through that bump.
But I don't, you won't see.
Oh, that's, and that kinda lines up with uh, what Henry did to look at his one, where's the spot was?
Here's the, here's the um, Berry Farm. Where we discussed that bump right there, just off the Berry, right in front of the Berry Farm, goes up. And there's a ridge in front of it, then drops.
That kinda shows.
I know, I, I was at a.
So what part of, is this the center of the area?
Do you see the red line?
Right, I mean, here.
Yes, this is the very center of the area.
Okay, right, so that's, that's the yellow dots, and they're seeing the border. This is assuming we'll. So you see a little bit of that. I see, so, could you put another line that goes right off the top of the hump?
But then you'd be like talking about that middle property right here, with a little, it's like you're standing on this one. There's a great idea, which is right here.
It's cool.
No, I guess what I'm saying is, I agree with that line, I'm just, if you do a line off the top of the hump, I was just curious how high up on the building will go, we're seeing.
I see, yeah.
It's just I'm curious.
You can do anything, yeah, so Google, Google Earth was all I used, Google Earth, something. So the elevation.
Yeah, 'cause you can come down and then.
Yep.
Exactly.
So I thought that was kind of the best I could get for a decent.
Yeah, 'cause Henry's, Henry's looks a little different.
Yeah.
Well, hi- his.
He's still got a great job.
His is just a line drawn with elevation, so it gives you a sightline.
Yep.
This is based off your actual vision, again, with no tree cover.
But with no tree, it's good.
So, okay, that's interesting.
Is there any place we can go up on the land that we can actually see off of it? I haven't been up there to actually look all around, I see.
It's gonna be tough until we build the project.
No, but right now, there's no open areas that you can.
No, project.
The problem is, it's on tree.
Right, and there's that area.
And if I was gonna judge off of Henry's and yours, they seem to kind of agree on that sightline.
Yep.
Henry's is with no tree cover. There's things like what, fifteen feet tall?
Twelve.
Twelve feet tall, they're leaving the trees below them, which are thirty to forty. So you'd have to be able to have enough angle for over thirty-four. So I feel if we saw something, it'd probably be the top of the sections are raised along.
We should get a, we should get a big balloon or something and put it up there, 'cause I've been.
Will you do some flares?
I spent about an hour.
Just call the fire department.
I spent about an hour at the cemetery.
The cemetery is the easiest one, actually.
Yeah.
To visualize, because if you're so close.
Yeah, it's mile.
It's easy to draw the cones.
Yep.
The berries is the hardest because you get so far back, they're all green hills.
Right.
You can't even see the road, like, the cemetery, you don't see the road, section of the road that cleared, so you can kinda, okay, that's that, so. None of the berries just looks very different, which is why Henry's was great.
Yeah, no, I liked Henry's, for sure.
And then I liked seeing that one, because it gave you a lot of sight and you can kinda compare it to Henry's and see you're on the same page.
Yeah.
I'd have questions if they seemed. If they seemed really close, I mean, that little bump from the Berry Farm is kind of the bump you see in um, Henry's. That blocks it in the weather picture. What amazed me is how wide they, how wide it's gonna be, I didn't expect it to be, you know, it's. If you look at what lines up in Mount Madmont, it's, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good chunk of that perspective.
It's almost directly east, east-west and the whole thing is arranged that way.
Yep. Being that we talked about the impact analysis. Do you wanna just quickly run through the appendix D and all these? Make sure I covered everything that I would've been concerned? I mean, I read the Bigelow Hill one, seems to cover the points that people are concerned about. Make sure we just check all three? Make sense? I'm sorry, can I, I didn't hear what you said?
I was distracted.
Yeah, alright, well, I was just saying, I'm on Bigelow Hill. I wonder if you just went through appendix D on each of these, which has their impact analysis to make sure. The forms of what people, we felt we need for information. If that's good, then we're, we're good, we just need to make our statement, that's it.
Some, something that's not present is um, real estate value of the abiders. Oh, it's a standard of living or the real estate value, and standard of living is kind of covered by living impact.
Right, so like if you had a slaughterhouse with an illegal blood tub, that might impact your standard of living more than a solar job.
It does say in B, living impacts, have no minimal impact on the standard of living and real estate values.
Oh, it mentions real estate values, great.
At least in Bigelow Hill one.
It's, it's, that's in the Dort one.
It's right, it's.
In Dort West is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'll always reach out, I mean, you can find, you can obviously, if anything, just go find research that matches whatever you want now.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing too, the value of your property is based on what you think. Someone not gonna wanna see that, maybe that thing's not worth that much, the buyer's up, so it doesn't care.
I mean, the overall consensus is somewhere between, I mean, on the very high end, seven percent. But to my memory, it was between three and one percent if you were of value difference in your, in your real estate. I would, I, in this case, it might be different for, for. The resident that lives on that because it, it greatly alters, you know, if, if that's your thing. You're saying this project is gonna negatively impact the value of residential real estate on Bigelow Hill by seven percent?
Uh, I, I said that it was brought up here and when I did some research on it, you could find evidence, and I just said walking around here, that you can find evidence to match whatever you want today's world, right?
That's true.
On the high end, the, the highest I could find when I looked up was seven percent. The consensus was usually no more than three, but sometimes one percent difference in, in impact.
I would say if they were across the street or next door, perhaps, but.
Yeah, I, I, they had a spec of within, it was less than a mile. Um, but someone who lives on a, on a class six road, it may affect that one more.
I think that the class six road would affect it more than.
In today's world, for some people, that's value.
I guess so, it comes down to, down to the town, what you.
Right, on that one specifically, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was that you guys had hit all local trails that were marked and, and impacted.
Yeah, that's gonna come.
Yeah, I remember reading that the first time, I figured.
The Bigelow Hill says, a seven-foot tall farm fence would provide a visual screening. I thought there was, is it a chain link? You said it was a chain link, wasn't it? Or logical calls?
It's not chain link per se, it's a, it's a twisted wire fence.
Yeah.
But um.
That's the same thing though, or is that different?
Similar, chain links, the, I mean, you guys know what chain link is, this, let's see if I can find a picture. There, there should be a detail.
But the farm fence is what you guys had in the plan, it's just what they call it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little bit more of the chain link, it's a little bit prison feel, or just a little bit more.
There's no reason why. Cause of chain of wire?
Once was, all the projects were originally done with three feet of barbed wire on top of eight feet of fence and it was.
What?
Ugly, that was the first type of solar that, that was just what we were doing until a bunch went up and didn't look great. But yeah, there's a detail of the fence, the fence has.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that agreement was. I just didn't see the term farm fence. When I think farm fence, I think usually crude and barbed wire or electrified.
Yeah.
So as far as I came, I was like, you're talking barbed wire, we're talking electrified?
Fiber glass.
Usually, usually farm fences never look good.
This one does.
Did we, it's a little offside of this, did we receive letters from fire and police yet? We're gonna need those before we.
I don't think so, I mean, we've gotten into conditional use, it's not having received.
Yeah, that's. Alright, so it's kinda, reminds me of the girlfriend, it's all squares.
Yes.
Squares, not diamonds.
Have you seen anything from fire or police?
Unfortunately, I can send any of them.
Yeah, just so we don't forget about the, I mean, I know we have the conditional uses, but. Think we have less we have to chase, if I had better than that, at least try to. I feel their impact analysis kinda covers all the points that I brought up. Can I see the Bigelow, little one?
Yep.
I haven't not dealt with it before. The decommission, when you get to that, assuming you come to town again to say, hey, the decommission's gonna be traffic again, yada, yada, yada.
In thirty years?
That would be assumption, um, I don't know.
I'm not sure, I've never dealt with that, so I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know if we get the law in for it, still don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, is there a building permit to unbuilt something?
Yes.
Demolition.
Demolition.
So yeah, that could be something.
Now, also, if they did that, they would end up pilot, so they wanna make sure they do that.
Say that again?
Well, they wanna do that because they're pilot, and whatever, but keep going until. Demolition permit is filed, right? Cause of taxes.
Right, yeah, that's the idea of pilot.
Yeah, so that could be a good addition to the condition we have on decommissioning, would be just. Require the, the proper permitting.
But we, the proper permitting, cause we don't know what the permit is gonna be.
It's gonna be.
Yeah.
Proper notification.
Twenty years ago, you would not have added demolition permit.
Exactly.
I just sort of thought, just thinking of the traffic.
Yep.
The traffic construction, we even talked about traffic decommission. Probably be the same, the only difference is you actually take that out more, well, no, you gotta take out cement out.
Cement out.
Yeah. Good point, yes, stuff that crosses in mind, maybe.
So just, just so we're clear, and these impact statements, like, this, this is one of those things where it was just in here, it does say that it provides electricity to residential residences, owners and commercial entities. And that needs to be taken out.
No, exactly.
Well, I think you're not supplying the residential.
We are, uh, these are community solar projects per the NIP metering, oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, you, the only people who can benefit from our municipalities.
Not Dort West, Dort West is a community solar project. Which one are you reading?
Oh, I.
All three say the same thing.
Three say the same thing, okay, so it'll be a copy paste, but Dort West, which is the one I was thinking of, is going to residential via community solar? Because it's less than one megawatt AC.
Okay, right.
The other projects are greater than, so maybe.
So people could buy into Dort West?
People will, yeah.
Who'd do it through the community solar, or the community?
Anyone with an ever source or PSNH bill.
Yep.
Will be available.
Yeah, cause it's like when you check out where you wanna source it.
Right, you check the box off and you.
Yeah, yep.
Hope the bill goes down, watch the look.
You want a hundred percent renewable.
Yep.
But the Bigelow Hill one won't, because you can really sell credits to the municipalities.
Nor Dort East.
Yeah, you mentioned it before, you, you was, you know, cutting, cutting cases.
Couple thousand pages and just can't learn from time, make it easy, man.
Well, yeah, I mean.
So if nobody objects, I think I'm gonna hit the road, but I'll watch the end of the thing to see if there's anything else we can add.
Alright.
Thank you, Jack, thank you.
My, my driver's going to charge me overtime.
Yes, he let it look.
He's gonna ask for a day.
Why do you guys keep going up this late, this early?
We called out four times, man. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you. So, looks like you have everything with the impact analysis.
Yeah, I don't have any, um. Major objections, I think it'd be nice to have citations for things like. Real estate values. But I understand from like, Michael, they're, it sounds like they're readily available.
Yeah, but on the Bigelow Hill side of it, there, there's an impact to it, right, there's a, there's a definite impact to that one in particular. Um, some of the other people have got industrial. You know, zones, areas, that you got, I mean.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and I don't know how, and it's, it's so subjective on that one.
Well, that, that's not a worry, it's like, we're gonna ask them to cite something, they may cite one and a half percent.
Yeah.
But someone's gonna be like, well, I found.
Yeah.
Four point two percent.
Yeah.
Oh, you can, again, like, the internet is a wonderful.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but.
But as, as it is right now, there isn't even a citation.
Yeah, well, I mean, they, they discussed the minimal impact, which I think. Is what we can reasonably expect. I mean, you get too much of a citation.
In a normal situation, I would agree with you, but this is not normal, on the Bigelow Hill side.
Well, how do you, how do you give them presentation with a number that's actual?
I think you could make an assertion on Bigelow Hill, that if the road was cleared of debris. Uh, and personal property that falls into it from at least one of the residents, you would have. And if that, if this project caused that to be cleared up because they need to be able to go through the public right, right? Uh, you might actually improve values.
At least make up people happy. Make up people happy.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying, nobody, yeah, I'm just not sure how.
Yeah.
What are we gonna require from them, you're asking for the number?
Uh, yeah, or a source, you know, ABC consulting, study twenty twenty-two or whatever.
That's like a real, real drawer. Type thing, so we don't have to put a number, but it's just a source that shows that there's a minimal.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do the same thing you guys are gonna do, right, I'm just gonna type.
Address the issue of property values.
Yeah.
Specifically on a, specifically in that kind of context, I think the Dort and, and like. I mean, you, you almost touched Bigelow on, on one of the Dort street ones, but I think that's self-explanatory. But I think it's a unique situation with, with someone living on a class six road. I don't know if we'd be able to find information on that, but I think maybe a little effort to show due diligence might go a long way in public opinion.
Okay, so, um, residential home value citations, I could try to do it a similar way that I did for the Board of Health, where I found two or three different. References and I can just include them.
Well, what's the impact of upgrading the road on property values?
Yeah, I mean, it would be the whole, my butt.
Yeah, it's gonna look like you're pitching a hole in a, in a direction that you'd like to see it go, I, I don't think that.
No, I think it's a, well, that's true, I, I, I find it difficult to believe that.
You, because you or I do not wanna live on a class six road.
I actually do, so.
Well, I, I guess, I take that back, I, I do as well, I don't want the headaches that go along with it, but. I don't like that, for someone that. Has been out there, if someone wants property not surrounded by anything else.
Well, but if it, if the question is property values, cause you're specifically addressing the issue of property values.
Right.
Not that person's preference, but the preference of the next person.
Who would want a house on a class six road? Right, I mean, that's what we're talking about, a house located on a class.
But, but you would, you would, the question is property values, and houses that are located on. Better roads, get better prices. It may not be the right house for somebody who wants to live on a class six road.
Right, but a house with a view, regardless of the road, gets a better value, right?
But the majority of people who want to buy houses, want better roads. So, you may disappoint the person who wants to hike in on their skis in February. But that's a very small pool of buyers, compared to the vast majority of buyers who want relat- relatively improved access. So if it's the, if you're addressing the question of value.
It goes beyond the road.
To the future person.
It goes beyond the road.
It goes beyond the road.
Right, it's not just the road.
It's not just the road, but the road, a better road, any study that you are gonna pull up, just gonna show better roads will get you better prices on houses.
There's multiple. That's right, I'm not arguing that, but.
You're arguing that there are people who would like to live on crappy roads?
No, or that if, if your neighbor is a solar farm, that it doesn't, I don't care what kind of road you live on.
That's a different issue.
Right.
That's not the road issue, whether it was a class six road or a class four road.
No, but when you're all by yourself, if, on a, on a road like.
But that's, the issue is value, so.
Right.
You can't have, you can't make both arguments.
You certainly can.
Okay, well, you can, you would not be right from the perspective of valuation of property.
Then, then views shouldn't be taxed either.
Views are not taxed.
If we're talking about roads. Your value, your home has a better value because of your view, right, if you have a home with a view, you have a better value, it's nothing to do with the road.
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
Did you give a clearer idea of what you need to know?
I'm gonna do my best to show what net, net impact.
Regardless, I just want to make sure you have a clear idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the four or five neighboring parcels, and there are three that are undeveloped that are north of me on a class six road that can't be. And I'm not impacting at all, because they're not gonna be able to see or hear it, there's the Sandman property. That I still don't think she'll be able to see the project from her house, but obviously she's gonna drive by it every day. So it's gonna be hard for me to put a quantitative number on how much less she or the next buyer values the house by driving by the solar project. But I'll certainly acknowledge it's less, and then there's two parcels across the street and down that. Should see material benefit from a road upgraded, from a quality spec. Not from a standard spec, because I'm not gonna imply that it's gonna be accepted as classified or not, but. There's a couple clearings that we pointed out at the, on the site walk, where we said, ooh, those people are, would really like it if it's class five. And that's where the road agent was like, well, we don't know if it's classified or not, but like, that's what I'm trying to do, is look at value from the four or five of budding perspectives.
Yeah, I guess, uh, you know.
Yeah. When I was, when I originally commented, I was just thinking of, uh, you know, even just a national study, not necessarily site specific. I think a site specific one would be most beneficial, but, you know, just a reputable source, you know, the New Hampshire Board of Assessors or something.
Says on generally solar, I figure.
Yeah, in general percentage.
There's not much on solar, because there's not much impact on solar, but when you click around, you'll find the material reports or the higher quality reports that have been done are surrounding wind farms. And those are found to be in the five to ten percent range, because. Big.
Right, you'd see it from the ceiling.
You hear it, you feel it, there's the. The perceived flicker impact that everyone talks about, where their kitchen lights just kinda go like that constantly, like. There's big issues with, with setting wind farms, and that's why we're not setting a wind farm here. Um, but there's, I just, to, to skip to the result, there's not a lot of great.
No, but that's fine, if there's a report that says, we looked at it and, and we couldn't find that there was any difference, that's still.
And this is why solar panels are better than wind farms.
I don't.
What's your slide?
Definitely, it's definitely a true statement.
So just do the best you can. Anything else?
I have a quick question for Zach, is it acceptable to forward the supplemental materials you shared with the board to, uh, the Manadonock berries?
Yeah, that's all, that's all public record.
Okay.
Everything we're providing is supplemental to that application.
Alright, um, thank you, since. I worked that long too.
Oliver.
Yeah, and a lot of things, in the three letters, the majority of the homework assignments have been from abutters asking, asking for it, so yeah.
Anything else for tonight? Encourage everyone to go through this, and if you have thoughts, share them in the emails, we have, we should discuss that team.
I, I have a, if you're ending your meeting, I, I have something not related to the solar farm, but I won't pass.
Okay.
So, I mean, maybe it is, but, I, you, I gave you a copy of the ADU permit.
Yep.
Or the ADU, ADU pamphlet, Fitzwilliam. And. You know, you guys, not tonight, but you might wanna discuss doing something, or how to select and publish something like that, if we're all.
So last meeting, were you there last night? We did discuss that, we felt it was a good idea to move forward.
Yeah.
So if you guys wanna move forward with it, or if you want us to, I guess.
Well, I guess what we should do is markup the Fitzwilliam one.
Yep.
I mean, why reinvent the wheel?
Yep.
So that's thing one, cause we do actually have a line of. And, uh. The other question that I have is, I would like to create a, like a flow chart. For the public that we can send out with our building permit applications, so we don't get into these kerfuffles over what requires a site plan and what doesn't. So, help me with this. I'll take it easy, honest all, cause I know it's late. Mister and Mrs. Smith own a conforming building lot with pound water and sewer. And we'll assume that there's no issues with attaching to the sewer, just for argument's sake. And they wanna build a single family house within the building restriction lines. So, there's nothing there that required the site, there's nothing there that requires a site plan.
Correct.
And so the select may issue that permit.
Providing setbacks.
That means all, uh, uh, we're, it meets everything, meets everything, oh. Mister and Mrs. Smith. Decide. Two years later that they wanna build a ADU. In some form. It's, whatever they do, is their plan is still within setback requirements. And therefore, under the rule that is exists now, by right, they can build that.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yeah, right, as of this year.
As of this year. Alright. So. Then we get into. What requires a site plan review, now we had. Uh, if, if it is going to be. Let's say, when, let's say Dollar General was coming to us again. If they were building a building, the hideous thing that they don't, but it meets all of the setbacks and it complies with zoning. Do they need to come here for a site plan?
Yes.
Why?
It's commercial.
Simply because it's a commercial use?
Are you talking about like their.
No, 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 I'm saying.
He uses.
It's never existed.
Yeah.
They've got a.
New, new commercial is.
All new commercial requires a site plan.
Or multi-family.
Okay, all multi, okay.
So I think he's getting that, this, this comes to the thing that we had earlier, the second, said, everyone else was first, they said they didn't come to the first. They're legally going here correctly, but should they still go to second first, I think he's trying to set up a flow of direction.
That's correct.
Which is why I suggested that the select board and the plan board sit together.
Well, and I don't know if we wanna really try and coordinate a joint meeting, but that would be fine too.
I think that'd be the best way to do it.
Because I still think. The plan, so it's a commercial use, I still think it should come, you still should have a single point of contact. But that single point of contact, Evy.
Yes.
Should know that what, if this is a commercial. Should know that what, if this is a commercial project, we, it's not that hard to make a list of these things and, and have a little if then, if it's this, then it goes here, if it's that, it goes there.
Yeah.
So that even if, so it's the responsibility of the selectmen to coordinate this, but it simply may be.
Yeah.
It, we're gonna.
That's why I suggested we all sit down, make the flow path, make sure, cause I wonder if we can just give you the list. Do they wanna be in charge of that deciding factor, or?
Well, there's.
Cause that's why I think we should both sit down.
We don't wanna be in, we don't wanna be in charge of some, we're not looking for a new.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think we both need to sit down.
Yeah, we need to agree on who, where it goes, as who's gonna, who puts their hand on the paper next.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, but I think it would be like seventy-five percent resolutions. Cause at the end of the day, the activities subject to site plan review are determined by the planning board.
They are, but he's talking about the process when someone shows off an idea, who do they go to first?
That's important to know.
Yeah.
So, does the planning board have the ability to reach out and say to Mr. and Mrs. Omar, hey, wait, you know, the selectmen issued you a building permit, but.
The problem is, we don't, we're not in a loop on, on every permit, so.
Well, this is, this is, this is the problem I'm trying to solve.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanna create a loop where all of the relevant stakeholders are in the loop, so that we're not holding people up needlessly, but we're also not misdirecting things.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I get it that if it's a, uh, what, what was the one that we had, the, uh, well, I forget what it was, but, you know, I, I get it that if it is non-conforming, like we had the proposal for townhouses.
The townhouses.
And that goes, it has to come to us, get rejected and go to the ZBA. And then I would think the ZBA would send it back to the planning board, I would assume.
Uh, yeah, for site plan.
For site plan, because, well, may or may not be multifamily, depends upon.
Thank you.
Uh, so, you know, I'd like to work this out, well, we would like to work this out. I was, we were going to review it tomorrow night, and when I looked at it, I said, you know, we don't really have enough, I, I hate to say it, but we don't really have enough information. This has sort of been functioning on random for, you know.
Years.
Two hundred and eighteen years.
Well, we, it's, someone's stuff is in our ordinance, and I.
Yeah, but I think he's looking for something like a quick sheet that, when someone comes to the office.
This should all be able to be laid out on a piece of paper.
Or it doesn't matter who the selectman is.
Correct.
Or look at it and say whether or not, because before.
Exactly.
It doesn't even have to be you guys, it's a piece of paper, Evy can grab it, Sarah can grab it, Jeremy can.
It can be, it can be online, the person where they fill out their application can say, oh, I wanna build a four family, oh, that's gotta go to sites man, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I like your idea of connecting it to the building permit.
Right.
No matter what you apply for, you just gotta check which one you are.
Right, and then that tells you you go here.
Yeah.
Wherever here is.
So, I think we should really set a time for the both of us to sit down, decide how we're gonna.
I think we could do, I, I, I would rather do it by, uh, again, I think that sometimes bigger meetings are less productive.
Yeah.
If you guys have a list of criteria, send them to us, we'll hash something out and send it back to you, and then you add it, and then if we need, we can, we can send it back and forth a couple of times.
Right, yeah, we can work on that, it'll probably be after this whole site.
I would assume so, but, but it's.
So I wanna make a plan for that, add that thing in there, and we'll discuss a flow chart of building permits.
And then I have one other question for you. As you redoing the master plan in, in light of the proposal for townhouses at, at, uh, up on the North End, do, are we contemplating higher density housing like that in town? Or we are, we haven't contemplated what we're contemplating?
We haven't really discussed it, unfortunately.
Okay, I mean, it's not.
Survey results would, would be mixed, right? It would really be inconclusive in that kind of thing, especially in that area.
I would, yeah, but it, it would, we could say there's some support.
Oh, absolutely, that's why I mean it's inconclusive, we have a lot of people who don't wanna see anything.
Yeah, it's not definitely yes or no, there's a, there's a support vote there for.
I mean, it's, you know, I, I've, I've spent forty-plus years in the building business or in real estate, and it's a common misconception in this area that townhouses or like what the Levics are proposing are multifamilies. They're not. Very rarely are they, they may be more commonly here, but it is in the, out in the real world, they are more commonly fee simple estates, meaning they're on their own land. It's a little twenty-two by sixty lot, and they have a, you have a zero block line zoning, so you build them all next to each other. Um, and that's a different kind of ownership than a condominium, it's, if you go the Wright Estates or even the Court Street condos, yuck. Uh, they're condos, which is a kind of ownership, it's not a kind of building. And you can have guard departments, uh, the ones out at, uh, Brookside were, uh, guard, built those guard departments and then converted to condos, and then the, somebody went through, the, the Thomases went through the effort of slowly buying every one of them back, and then they converted it into a garden.
Brookside's a one by one scenario.
That's correct, yes, yeah. So, I just, you know, as, as you think about these things, you put your plans together, if you're gonna fix housing or change housing in Troy, you should probably think about, and I know I've said this before, but I just was curious. Because the Levics came up with that, that proposal, which to my eye, it looked reasonable, but I have to understand people might be uncomfortable with it. Alright, I won't hold you up further, thank you.
Well, thank you for your input.
Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah. So, but we are gonna, we are gonna, we're gonna mark up the Fitzwilliam pamphlet.
Yeah.
And put it, make it blue and, blue and white, cause those are Troy colors instead of green and white.
Yeah, we thought it was a great idea.
Alright.
Selectmen's update?
We do have two building permits, but there's an expansion on a private house, a single house, and they're just expanding it a little bit there. And another, uh, new man, new house up on Happy Road. The plans look like they all need all the things, uh. Other than that, the townhouses, they're supposed to be going to the ZBA, I don't know what the, if they've met yet or if they've talked at, like, I don't.
Hey, our meeting is. Seventeen.
The seventeenth at six o'clock.
So I'm covering for you, Matt, just you know.
And then, um, other piece of property that's on the south side on Off Route Twelve, where they did all the, uh, clear cutting and everything like that, that's technically supposed to be coming in here for site plan too. They were told that they need site plan.
It's storage, right?
Yeah.
That's fair, that's okay.
Uh, and they haven't finished their driveway, they have one year to finish their driveway permit. Um, we have given them a cease and desist because they've been messing up everything.
I see they have tractors stuck.
They had a tractor dropped, stuck, they're blocking Route Twelve traffic, um, one of the tractors got hit and damaged one of the fuel tanks. Um, they damaged the Troy sign, um, so we had a DOT last Friday, trying to get all this, uh, figured out. DOT decided to letter to them as well as to the select board, we are, we are trying to rectify it.
So they're trying, are they trying to get a driveway on Route Twelve?
They have a driveway permit for Route Twelve.
Oh, they already have one.
So they were supposed to contact the town and they need to talk to us about where to move the sign.
Oh, that's where the driveway is?
That's where the driveway is, but their driveway is bigger than what DOT approves.
Okay.
Uh, so there is issues there, they're supposed to have a cave twenty feet in, um, it's supposed to be twenty feet at the, at the road, um, and then bottom that down into twenty feet, and there is issues. So basically, the, the selectmen are working that issue, and it's approved right here. I just got a certified letter from everybody and, um, other than that, uh, roller skating Friday, Troy school from the rec, and, uh, this Saturday's community rep assessment.
Roller skating seven, did you say, last time?
Uh, I don't know if it's a two session. I don't think we even know, nobody knows.
Okay, I'll stay tuned.
Yeah.
I would say a fire room.
Yeah, if you see, um, the Facebook post, honestly, I haven't been to the last meeting, cause we had selectmen's meeting there last meeting, so.
Yeah, maybe.
I'm gonna.
Yeah, the meeting tower, um, so that seemed to go pretty well too.
Okay. I saw.
There's a lot of stuff going on in town, um, parcels and pieces, and we're trying to work with it as we can. So, that's all you got.
Anything else, Phil?
Uh, just quickly, we, we, we started our chemical feed upgrades down there, and we finally got a bid for a slug removal, so. I don't know how that works, I know it's been a topic on Facebook, but.
I thought we had to send you guys up to a shop.
I mean, I, it's, it's kinda the DES requirements, we had to ask for some waivers on that, because we got zero bids the first time, and it's all on timing, right? And we have to put it out for a certain amount of time, so, um, it's been a, a, a back and forth between DES and, and, and bidders, um, but we just secured one for that, and, and even though some are technically coming to an end, our workload is still quite large, so we're hoping to still get that done. This year, and I did, just real quick, I did reach out to Justin, he's gonna, um, at least like temporarily mark out where the sewer lines is on Dort Street for, for, I mean, it won't affect, um, I don't know what orientates west, east and west over there, but, um, the one that they're gonna have to cross, he said he'll, he'll, he'll mark and figure out if he can get some depth and give us something that.
Yeah, just looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Perfect.
It's in his, uh, line of vision right now, so.
Anything else, Phil? I'm gonna close it up at nine forty-three. Thank you, everyone, as always, for your time.
Thank you.